Yeah, it's pretty much about the question of frontage. I'm sorry you didn't get it till tonight. Which could be done at that level.
Correct.
Is that all? Yes, okay. Moving your hands. Is there a volume thing you can turn down a little bit? Do we have a control board?
There is not. None that I've been alerted to or given any kind of background on.
All right. Why don't we start? It's a few minutes after seven. Welcome. It's Village New Paul's Planning Board Meeting of February 2nd, 2016. We have in continuation of the pre-application for PB 1602, which is 8791 and 93 North Chestnut Street, the Net Zero Development LLC. That's the only application material in front of us. We have a couple of zoning updates and a few administrative business things. We have a letter from... To consider for supporting historic preservation commission grant application. And David can tell us more about that. And if... We'll see if we can do anything about the planning board webpage discussion. And that's it. We have a brief, hopefully brief, executive session I need to discuss with... Use some issues around employment of a... Ongoing employment of an individual or corporation. Okay. So, you guys, you can...
This is going to be much shorter than the last one.
Yeah, one hour and two.
That's right.
I want to give you guys some mic...
You know, we did all the mighty heavy lifting in the last meeting in terms of giving us some direction.
Good. Glad that was helpful.
Right. We do have some new images. Does it make sense to set up the easel approximately where it was?
Sure, yeah. That'd be fine. I'll move around.
Are these there?
Yeah, I don't know if that's fine.
They're inside. Everything's inside like an envelope.
So it's the decorations plus the letter.
Yep.
David?
Yes.
Whoever's speaking, can you make sure they actually have a microphone on?
I will do so, yep. Chariot. Okay. Okay. So... All right, you ready to jump right into it? Yeah. Okay. So, we'd like to do two main things with you tonight. Update you on the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. These concern rooftop solar and height of the rooftop features, yards and setbacks, street parking, engaging the rail trail. We have a nice update on the notion of a blended space between the rail trail and Zero Place. A word on landscape design, a little bit about general height concerns and the public. And then the second big thing is I want to describe to you my hoped-for timeline for marching forward for a complete application and all that good stuff. Okay? Okay, so let's start with rooftop solar and height. If I could direct your attention to... Let's go ahead and go up there. Yeah, do you have that laser thing? So Liz, in particular, you raised the concern about the size of... In particular, the size of the solar awning that we had planned for Zero Place. Again, our motivations for that were in large part to ensure that we had maximum solar exposure for a couple of reasons. One being...
Can you show the old drawing, would you like to?
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great.
Yeah, I have the old drawing right in front of me, so...
Yeah. Okay, but for everybody else's benefit too. So that awning was meant to bring the solar up because, in large part, because of the shading of the elevator and stairwell structure. And also this notion of providing an amenity to the tenants. Let me show you what we've now done. We've recognized that that awning is disturbing not only aesthetically, but we discovered that in fact it violated the code in its size as well specifically, not just the spirit of the code. And can you explain that?
10% maximum on a rooftop past the building height limit of 50 foot.
Okay.
So a total rooftop area...
Right.
Only 10% can exceed the 50-foot limit. So that previous design was beyond that by the... This is not.
So let me tell you what we've done.
So, excuse me, I have a question. So you're still including a complete elevator shaft to have an exit onto the roof?
That's correct. I'll characterize the new situation now. Okay? So what we've done is we've increased the ability of... To put solar on the elevator and stairwell structure. We've put a declined roof facing... An inclined roof facing the south. And we also made the entire structure the same height so that it could accommodate solar. As opposed to the previous one where the elevator shaft was the only high point... Was the highest point and the rest of the structure was lower. This allows us to basically fill the entire elevator and stairwell structure with solar. Secondly, what we've done is we've allowed a space for shadowing that behind the elevator... Where's that laser? Did you say that? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So just point to the space between the elevator shaft and the... And then a solar array at the backside of the building that's just outside of the shadow space of that structure. So now, if you go back to the previous thing, you can see that the profile of the building and the size of that thing in the back is significantly reduced. And we're within the 10% code thing that Dave just described. To your question about do we still intend to allow... I guess your attention... Why do we have an elevator on the top? We still intend to allow tenants to go to the roof and use a very small, relatively small space between the rear solar panels and the structure. Which is... There's nothing that I know of that would disallow that kind of use in the code.
Well, there's a... By New York State definition, if you are utilizing the roof other than just a roof, then it's considered a floor, a story. And if you don't have the patio... For lack of a better term, the patio that you would like to have there. And don't get me wrong, I like the patio.
Yeah.
I just think that it's too high up. Like I said at last meeting. And if you're not... If you can't have a patio on the roof, then you wouldn't need an elevator door.
Right. Let me ask you this.
And then the mechanicals for an elevator would be below the parapet level and everybody would be happy.
I guess my understanding of the code and yours is a little different. If you could point me to something that says that allowing people to be on the fifth floor is tantamount to a fifth floor and thus is outside of the code, I'd like to know that. Because if that's not how I read the code. Does everybody else get some...
No, let me... Could I point out too, your new code... I keep forgetting the name of the zone.
NBR.
NBR zone.
The alphabet zone.
It says right here, when it talks about height requirements, it says maximum four-story, but not greater than 50 feet, except as provided in section 21218A, and exclusive of usable rooftop area for private and/or common outdoor space with or without rooftop gardens and our green roofs and exclusive decorative architectural features. So the new code seems to be addressing the fact that these buildings could very potentially have, you know, private use on rooftops. So is our new code in conflict with the New York State definition?
I think it is, yeah. So you...
Not the building of a three-story store.
So why don't we get an opinion from our attorney about that?
Maybe our rooftops.
That would be... We can forward that to them and ask them...
It wouldn't be a violation. It would just be that we want to use roof, but have it in three stories.
Well, we don't...
Well, you're saying it's in a building.
Let's get an interpretation. This... Between this meeting and the last has identified New York State Building Code issue that...
So would that say an attorney would interpret that?
So we'll ask our attorney and our building inspector to have a look at the current code compared to the New York State Building Code. Is this building code? Is that what this is? And we'll just have to... We'll just put that as an item that we're here to figure out. So you, for the moment, why don't you proceed?
Sure, sure.
Just for clarification, are we gonna enter these newly submitted plans into the record for the pre-application? Like, was there some changes in the...
What's the design?
Given to us?
And we'll be soon submitting a full application. It's submitted to you.
Let me be clear. You have a copy just for the purposes of us discussing right now. You have a copy in your hand.
I don't have it.
Oh, you don't? Can someone give Dave a copy? We need to make more than seven. We need to make 10.
We had eight copies.
Okay. So, anyway, to address that...
We usually have 10. That's why we don't have an issue.
Anyway, to address that, let's... We don't have to officially enter this into the record, but we have them. It's here. It's public. If somebody wants a copy, they can request a copy from the planning board.
Now, my...
When you're ready to submit your full application, whatever you submit then is what you submit.
Absolutely. And... Right, and that would be sort of the usual protocol of getting it to you two weeks ahead and all that.
Whatever it looks like.
That's right, yeah.
Anyway, so why don't you continue?
As someone familiar with the building code... I could at least initially comment on this question in advance of a more thorough review before the next meeting. Your code and the building code may have different ways of seeing the same thing, which does not necessarily mean that they're in conflict. I think you're right that state code defines that as a fifth floor, but your code allows it. That doesn't mean that the code and the building code are in conflict. They just define things differently. That's very common. So, I mean, probably the research will discover that you're correct, but that either doesn't end issue or similar. So it still may be that your code allows it and building code allows it. And...
Right. Right, so there's a different question.
From there.
Right. So there's two different questions, right? Whether state code says this and whether that matters. At the end of the day, if your code is what governs this, I guess.
No, state code governs.
The new... Right, but the new code seems to say you can have four stories plus outdoor space. They don't necessarily define it as a fifth floor or whatever. They say this is allowed on a story of the roof of a four-story building. And in the state code, it's called a fifth floor, but it might not be referred to such here.
Yeah, I guess to be clear then, what we're asking your attorney to do is to identify whether the state code in fact says that and whether, you know, that means your code cannot say what it currently says, right?
Well, can I just maybe shed a little light on this? Because I run into this problem all the time. In that the zoning codes, you know, that are established by the village has to do with the use, the exterior of the building, and we have to comply obviously with all those codes. The building code has to do when we build the building. We have to... So if the town, or the village I should say, defines yes, that building is allowed at that height, that dimension, in that use, in that place, and you give us site plan approval, and we have site plan approval, then when we go for the building permit, it must comply with the specifics of the building code, which may define and call things differently, but it's just a whole nother set of code review for the construction of the building. If they call that upper floor a fifth floor, yet it meets all of the, you know, the public safety issues and everything, then it's a permissible use under the building code. And it's really interpreted differently than what would be interpreted by the zoning code. You know, it's just...
Yeah, that may well be the case. I mean, that's... My limited experience with our current building inspector and related issues is that this is identified as a definition of what a floor is as per New York State Building Code. That may have certain implications. What I need our attorney to do is look carefully and have the building inspector look carefully through where does that appear in the New York State Building Code and what are the ramifications? It may not nullify what our code is, but it might say if you're going to be using that as public space, consider it a floor. And here are the various, as you point out, safety and public health issues you have to comply with in order to be able to do that.
Right. Which is actually one reason why it has the appearance it has here to some extent. Because in order to comply with state code to occupy the roof above a four-story building, we need to have elevator access and, you know, an accessible...
Oh, yeah, I understand that. And you're gonna need handrails and all that stuff.
So it's implied in the code that you would have an elevator or stair tower at the top of a four-story building and that that would be permitted as long as it wasn't too large.
So for the purposes of this discussion, let's recognize that we've got... What we're trying to do is identify issues that need further investigation or things that, you know, are related to our local code that we need to discuss. So that you can put together a site application. I'll make sure to get our attorney to provide information on this and I'll get it to you guys, you know, enough time so that you can deal with it.
And just to... Let me jump to the timeline thing while we're here so that I can stamp that. I am hoping to get you a full application in time for the second... The first... Is your next meeting... Is your first meeting in March, the Tuesday, the first of March?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to get our full, complete application in by then. Which means I want to have everything to you by the 16th of February. So if I could get an answer to that ahead of 16th of February so we have time to...
Yeah, I will... Tomorrow morning, we'll sell this off. We'll try to turn it around Monday of next week.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Cool.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I guess the only other thing I'll point out is the horizontals... I mean, the east-west side of that structure, the elevator and stairwell structure. You can see that even though the elevation from the west side, the far top, the top one, from the 32 North side, even though it shows like a really prominent elevator, you're not going to see that from the street. This thing is set back how far?
Over 30 feet.
Yeah. Over 30 feet from the edge. I just want you to understand that.
And it's only... This is only... This is less than a foot taller than the other one. It has to the roof angle and the elevator beam. We moved the elevator as far to the north as we could so that we could have as low a roof as possible still cover it. And so we... It's only eight inches taller than the previous design, so a modest amount. But it got rid of a lot of the height intrusion that was objectionable. And it still gets us an awful lot of solar. We really need it. One of the things we've also done that's a change. This used to have... We had some other features in here, but we've gone to continuous solar on the south side as well as solar on the first floor porch route. Because really, to hit our goals, to get as close to zero net energy for the residential floor, or hopefully for all of it, but we're not sure how zero we can be. We're certainly aiming as high. But of course, the solar generation is critical. And so that's one of the reasons why we've done everything we can to maximize how much solar. And we have, in fact, we're up to nearly 188 kilowatt system as designed here, which is a significant bump to the previous design. So that's one of the drivers for our...
Dave, the... Can you give me... You have the height dimension of your elevator shaft. Can you give me the other dimensions, the length and width?
I can. It is... It's about 20 feet in the north-south dimension. It's not here because we haven't shown floor plans which have dimensions.
Okay.
Sorry.
So it's about 20 feet?
But it is a little over 33 feet in the east-west dimension. So it's actually... Well, you can see it here. So in the... From east to west, it's 33 and a half feet. Somebody has to have think there's insulation around it.
Okay.
And then a little over 20 feet. So it's... It is over 600 square feet in total perimeter. And a little bit wider at the top. We actually made sure that our roof overhang is enough to get another row of solar panels on the upper floor.
And I'm sorry, so it's 33 by what?
33 by 20, or the rough dimensions is probably slightly bigger than the 33. But so it's a little over 660 square foot footprint on the roof.
Yeah, 30...
Okay. Dave, why don't you give me?
Okay. The only other thing I'll put... So, again, I want to kind of foot stomp this thing. We're really trying to make a building that is fundamentally different and distinct to the state of New York. This, if we can achieve this in our zero energy goal, this is going to be an award-winning building that the state is going to celebrate. You know, so I don't want to try to beat around the bush on that. And I hope that the village and the planning board appreciates that goal and can really help us figure out how to put as much solar on here as we possibly can to achieve that goal. Right now, Dave's showing you a plan with 188 kilowatts. We believe we need to get close to 200 kilowatts to really achieve zero energy. We're gonna figure out a way to do that at some point. But we are taking every square foot to do this, okay? All right. The last thing is also take note that the building height to the parapet, right, Dave, is currently at 46 feet.
Well, that's the roof deck, then the parapet's another three. The parapet should be under 50 foot, the actual final.
Right.
And there's still plus minus to work out for it, but...
Right. That is not...
That's correct. Building height hasn't changed.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that the building height is under 50 feet. Okay. All right. Yards and setbacks. You want to talk to that, Barry?
Sure.
And thank you for the... This is great, the legal...
The legal interpretation.
Yep.
So this is clear. It is what it is.
We agree to. I only just read this during the...
Yeah, I apologize.
We came up to the same conclusion, basically, that crawling this up front street would be a little problematic for us. And it was questionable whether it could be or not. So we dropped that. It sounds like that what we have is we have one frontage, North Chestnut, which your attorney's recommended, which we agreed to. There's actually zero setback there, but we have to have the building set back to provide the proper sidewalk and the sight lines. It was pointed out by your planner that we were encroaching on a 90-foot by 90-foot site triangle that's in your zoning code here with the building.
Is it 90? No, it's 30 by 30, isn't it?
Oh, 30 by 30. I'm sorry. I think that's something else. 30 by 30. So we slid the building slightly back and a little bit to the south to so that the building will clear that triangle. That closed this gap up a little bit in the back here with this green area that we're trying to keep as large as we can, but it's still usable. The parking lot has stayed essentially the same as we were here last week. We did meet with and hire the landscape architect who's gonna be doing the streetscape and landscaping all the way around. There was a meeting with... Before we do that, let me get back to the setbacks. So, you know, the front yard is your requirement of the Mulberry Street. I thought that was a front yard too, but your attorney's saying that you should only have one front yard. That's the recommendation. I don't know if that's a hard, you know, fact or not, but the requirement on the side yard is zero or 15 feet maximum. Which I think you quite understand that.
We have discretion. It provides discretion between 0 and 15 depending on the circumstances.
So we can be more than 15 on the side?
I'm not sure we still have a... Is that...
I'm slightly surprised.
You could do more. You could do less.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
Well, what we're showing here, if Mulberry Street is considered a side yard, the closest point is at 12 feet and the furthest point is at 43 feet. So I would interpret that right now as that that's in compliance of a side yard setback. The rear yard, which would be opposite the front yard, would be back here where we have a 10-foot setback. And what we... And I see she got the color wrong because this should have been yellow. This is actually a building with the dumpster enclosure. That our concern was that that could be in a front yard. A front yard can be no closer to the front than the building is. So it was kind of problematic if we did call this a front. But we believe this complies now. There's a rear yard or at least 10 feet. We're actually 12 feet because another section of your code says dumpsters have to be at least 12 feet from the rear yard. I'm not sure it says rear yard, it says from the yard. So our dumpster and storage building, you know, being in the rear yard, we believe complies. Or you may say it's in the rear yard that way, or it's in the side yard because it's on the side of the building. But the side yard requirement is only zero. I couldn't find anything in the code where it says that the parking had to have a setback from a side yard. I believe it could be zero, you know.
Yeah.
Confirm that. So we believe that this plan now complies with all the zoning setback requirements. And I know there's some mention here that it's necessary to go and get the variances, whatever you think, but we don't believe there are any variances. We certainly want to avoid any variances. So I don't know if we need further review and interpretation of this.
Well, it's my understanding that our code for any corner lot states that a corner lot will have two fronts and two rears and no side.
Well, did you read the letter? They kind of... They point that as a discrepancy, your attorney does. And I just read it very quickly.
Eric, we believe this means that a corner lot is considered to have only one front yard for purposes of zoning law, although the front yard setback requirements apply to each street trunk.
Yeah.
The NBR district standard is not consistent with this section.
Yeah, so the setbacks are a front and a front and a rear and a rear. She's not... I'm not disagreeing with what she's saying.
If you interpret that way, we still comply.
Yeah.
Because the front yard's only zero.
But you still have a rear yard. I don't know if that is necessarily true. I respectfully disagree that the northern edge is necessarily a rear because there is only... So, front is being used in two different ways here. There is only a single front to the building, and that's the one on North Chestnut. It should be the one on the predominant or the dominant street, the main street. The... Because the other... There is a side of the building that is on another street for purposes of setback only. That's... We use front yard setbacks for that. I don't know if that's... And therefore, the rear defined as being opposite a front.
It doesn't matter because the parking lot doesn't have to comply with the setback. It'd have to do with structures, you know, building, something with a roof, I believe.
Actually, there's a part about side yard. We prefer it to be a rear yard, probably.
Okay.
Just saying.
Well, I don't think there's...
There was something about parking in a side yard.
Yeah, but I think it's like two feet or something. I think it's really modest.
Something with a setback, I mean?
It was a specific wrinkle. I guess we'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. We're showing four feet. I don't think that was a problem, even aside. And that's how I was looking at this, this being a side.
Well, her interpretation of this requires her clarification where it says there's only one front yard, but the other street is gonna have setbacks as a front yard. So it's opposite that, that a side yard or a...
Well, that's the question.
Michael, could you ask them to look at that specifically?
So what... Michael, could you ask them to look at that specifically? So, what, how would they turn each of these four edges?
You know, you could int- my opinion is you could interpret it either way. It would still comply.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then it goes without asking.
Just so we got the terminology.
I will ask. I, I think the issue is, what, what is the questions you want an answer to? Because-
Is it opposite of Mulberry? No, no, the que- the question is, can we put the parking there?
We can. We can, we comply.
Yes, you can put the parking.
It's just through a couple of hearing, people are gonna come up with this question, and I think we're gonna have to answer it. Problem.
I know, but I don't, rear yard, side yard, I don't care.
How can they ask the opinion of the attorney? I guess my point is, which differs from Liz's, which is fine, is, if I understand, Liz is saying, if, wherever you identify a front yard, the opposite is a back. And I agree with that. Um, however, on the Mulberry Street side, I don't think, based on what I agree from our attorney, that that is a front yard. It's a side yard, but because it's on the street, you use front yard setbacks.
That's what I agree with.
That's all I, that's how I see it.
Yeah, that's, that's what your attorney's basically saying.
Okay, for setback purposes only, it's a front yard, but it's a side yard.
I wouldn't even put it that way. I would say it's a side yard because it's a front yard setback.
Side yard.
Same thing.
Got it.
I need to ask your question, clear my sentence for the book here.
I will ask.
So, so the-
For clarification on that.
As you have it now, and as we all agree that the front is a front, regardless of what's a side, so, the, what is abutting, the rail trail is a rear yard, yes?
Yes.
Correct. And the rear yard requires a ten-foot setback.
That's correct.
So, the loading dock is in the setback?
I, loading dock is not defined as a structure.
But according to, um, our code that refers to loading docks, it says it is not to encroach on front si- or side yards, or, um-
That's a rear yard.
Or, well, or, or in, in the, in the side yards, in the yards.
Sorry, sorry, the front, I mean, this is, this is a rear yard.
It's, it's not allowed to encroach in the yards in general.
The front yard has zero setback. You have to have entrance.
I didn't, I didn't, you're saying that in zoning? I didn't see that.
It's, it's not allowed to encroach in any of the yards, whether it's a front or a side or a rear.
It's not allowed to encroach the front yard setbacks, but there are no, zero front yard setbacks.
Liz, what are your, can you be specific, what your, can you, what's in the code?
The loading berth, two twelve dash forty-five A and B. And I had a question mark on that because I wasn't sure if it was going to be decided to be a front or a rear by the, the lawyer. Or a side.
It says, it just says, "Front yard, side yard require open space." It does, does not say rear yard.
It does not say rear yard, so, it is, is pretty specific.
Yeah, I think so.
Front yard, side yard require open space, accessway or off-street parking area. Um, I will, I will ask our attorney about that. That's fine. I mean, that's the best we can do here now. Um, is that our case list? Can I just ask?
I, I, I would still ask, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, while we're asking other stuff, might as well throw that one in.
Yeah, I think that's-
So, the specific question is, can the loading berth encroach on what?
The rear yard.
The rear yard.
You have the, you have your loading dock within the rear yard setback. So, we just will-
Yes.
You're being presented with a, a generator within the vicinity of that scene here.
Yeah, they're now saying that this is a side yard.
That's correct. You also want to discuss that this evening?
But because it's on a street, we use the same setbacks as a front.
We do, we do have a generator that we're proposing behind the storage building that would be within a ten-foot, if that's a freestanding, um, you know, unit with an enclosure. Once again, I don't believe that's a structure. It's very similar to transformer, electrical transformers, which I-
I think it would lead our definition of a structure, I guess.
But what's the definition of the structure?
It's defined in two twelve five zone.
Were you about to, you were about to continue, Dave? You said, "We may be considered a structure, but what?"
See if the definition of the structure says. Um, doesn't look like you have a definition of the structure.
How you find two twelve?
Yeah, two hundred and twelve.
Oh, two hundred and twelve.
Uh, oh, there you go. Anything you know that uses or require location on or under the ground or attached to, something having location on the ground, structure includes a building. Okay, so, next question will be, is, um...
Well, here's your question. What can you have in a setback? Obviously, we'll see whether you can have a loading dock in a setback.
Yeah, that's the question.
I'll ask for general.
The question is, what can you have in a setback? Can you have a bridge in a setback?
Yeah, a bridge.
Come down a bridge.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at, the setbacks.
Can you have parking in setback?
Huh?
Can you have parking in the setback?
That already exists, right?
That doesn't matter. If it's, if it-
It's in the plan, it still exists, really.
Say again?
It actually doesn't exist.
Actually, you know, I, I think it refers to buildings in reference to the setback, not structures. Is that, is that correct?
A lot of this, you know, the generator I'm just being presented here tonight on the podium.
So, you're not the expert on the podium?
Well, I think I'm, I think I'm facile with the code, but I like to, you know, reference things and flip pages and all.
Right, right, right.
So, I would prefer that we not try to solve these tonight. Uh, we don't have an attorney table.
Well, and, and I understand that, but I also, they, they wanna go as quickly as possible, and I don't want them to have to, if I was in their shoes, I wouldn't wanna get to the, the full-blown site plan application on, on an issue that they probably been, should've been made aware of before.
No, I, okay, so let me clarify. I would like all of these issues to be raised. And anything that is code-related for which we don't have consensus, let's, making a list of things to ask our attorney, we'll get, um, you know, an expedited response from them. And, um, we'll agree that, you know, we can, we'll have an opportunity to decide whether we feel it makes sense to us as planning board members, whether the attorney's opinion is, you know, we're all comfortable with it, and then you guys can proceed. Um, I know you're anxious to avoid variances, you know, and that's entirely up to you. I would say, for the purposes, again, of recognizing what it is you're trying to do with your building, that, um, if there are issues about site design that make it so that something will encroach in a setback and it's unavoidable, um, but, and it's relatively small, like a generator, for instance, uh, whether that might be relatively easy to move, but just as an example, then, um, I wouldn't hold the variance up as the booking.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we're willing to be flexible to, you know, modify the plan. We wanna comply with the code as much as we can.
Good.
You know, obviously, if there's an unavoidable issue, something we absolutely have to have, and it needs a variance, you know, we'll, certainly we'll consider that. But that's always been my goal, is to try to avoid variances.
That's fine, and I, I respect that.
Try to comply as best we can. So, that's why I said that statement.
Okay.
And we'd still like to proceed that way. So, you know, if we gotta tweak the building or some parking or something to do that, we're, we'll do that.
The generator seems like a customary accessory use.
Okay.
That would be one recommendation I have.
Yeah.
Okay, so this-
What does that, what does that mean?
That means it's exempt.
Exempt from?
Well, it's, it's from the setbacks. So, I know, I know there's a list in here where they talk about hornaces and overhangs, and that they're all exempt from the setbacks. Um, there may be another section somewhere in here where it talks about utilities. You know, like, I, I, the, to me, the transformer, other than the embig- I mean, the, uh, generator is not much different than a transformer.
Right.
Which, you know, you, you don't have to comply with setbacks.
Right.
It's part of utility.
Or propane tanks.
Or propane tank. Um, well, I don't, you know, some towns do regulate those, but...
Or a nuclear reactor can be, uh, which was the one.
Why don't you proceed?
Okay. Alright.
But, but I will point out, the generator, in order to back up this building, has to be quite big, and we don't have a lot of options where to put it. Because we put it right in front of some storefront, which we don't wanna do. Um, so, we, we actually give that a lot of consideration, and that seems to be, uh, you know, put it with the utility building. And, um-
Yeah.
And I might point out that Dave is gonna be designing that building. It's not gonna be an ugly building, as they know it comes up in the letter, as, it's up to the board's discretion whether we need to screen that accessory building because it does front on the trail.
And because it has garbage, uh, dumped in it, right?
Well, a portion of that structure is, uh, an enclosure, which I believe is gonna be masonry, in a nice decorative, uh, brick or block, and, um, and it would have steel gates in the front facing the parking area. Um, and then the building attached to it, which is used for storage, would have a roof on it, and it would also be a masonry. But it would be a nice-looking structure. They're not talking about, you know, some ratty-looking thing that people just throw their garbage in. And I believe also, this facility is gonna have a, um, a manager who's gonna be managing the garbage.
Okay.
You know, so it's, it's not, um, you know, it's, it's not gonna be a, a business where people are just throwing the garbage out some area of parking lot.
I don't think it answers.
The generator is, you refer to it as a backup.
Yes.
Is that-
Yeah, we have elevators in this building, so, like, my understanding is the code requires-
So, certainly this is something that you also need access for service, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And it, does it exhaust?
Yeah, it's, it, uh, it would have a, it would be, most likely, it would use, uh, the natural gas to power it, and it would have an internal combustion engine in it.
Sure.
And, um, it, uh, it would ta- usually they start up, you know, like, once a month, and run for ten minutes, warm up, and then shut down.
Is there just a test between a, a structure and-
It would have a sound enclosure on it.
In terms of exhaust, it's a building.
Yeah, there is, but it's, it's like ten feet or something.
Ten feet.
Yeah. It would have an exhaust.
They put these on rooftops.
Yeah, they put them on rooftops. They put, I've seen them quite close to buildings, actually. I think, the exhaust has to be ten feet, I think, from an opening, like a door or window.
Right.
Okay.
They don't create much exhaust anyway.
Yeah, not that-
Especially natural gas, yeah.
And it's, it's not really not gonna run, it's only gonna run continuously because of a power outage.
Right.
You know, um, you know, it's the way, you know, the way solars work is that, um, they don't provide, when you're on the mid grid system, they don't provide power when the grid's down.
So, okay, next topic?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, street, street parking. Is there anything more you wanna say about the thirty-two North?
No, I, I did not have a conversation with Luke Gloder, which I intended to before this meeting, um, about the parking and his thoughts on it, but I will definitely do that.
Who, let me, sorry.
For both, for, for Mulberry in particular?
Just to get his opinion about the parking.
Who?
Blue.
Oh, Blue, okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, uh, I have spoken to D O T, and, and once we pin down, this is where our building's gonna go, I'm gonna send a set of plans off to him, um, to, because we need D O T to approve the parking along Route thirty-two. Um, just, you know, talking a little further on the, um, the rail trail, uh, you know, the, the owners met with the Walkel, maybe, Dave, you could talk a little bit about that in the letter.
I'm gonna do that now.
Uh, basically, they're quite willing to cooperate with, um-
Barry, I got that.
You wanna just take it?
So, since I actually do want to point there.
Yes, I know.
Okay. So, alright, so, um, you, I, I gave you guys a letter that was written by, um, Christie DeBoer. I met with her a couple of weeks ago to discuss the idea that you, you had suggested about blending, actually, I think it was Dave Gilmore, who had suggested, um, investigating the idea of blending the edge of the rail trail with, with, um, zero place, basically, the first, what is it again, around forty to fifty feet along the rail trail, something like that?
Well, Mulberry, the building is, pretty much.
Yeah.
It was Mulberry, the building is.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're very excited about that idea. They think it'll improve the, the aesthetic appeal of this section of the rail trail. If you go back and look at it now, it's very ratty. It's, you know, it's sort of overgrown with weeds, and it has this culvert that's-
Concrete spoils.
That's, yeah, and it's, it's not very attractive. Um, so, they're very open to the idea. They simply wanna have a voice that, um, in, in, when we present a landscaping plan for it, that they agree that that's-
And Zil's actually agreed, he's the only one.
Yeah. So, so anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that they're very much in support of that, and, um, that's, that's exciting to us. Uh, any questions about that?
I, I suppose it was a missed out meeting. Is there an agreement for the bridge between the rail trail and this property?
So, are you referring to the one on the four North side?
Yes.
We, we certainly intend to leave that and leave the, the easement that's in place.
There is, there is an easement in place?
I believe that's true.
I don't know if there's an easement, but if there isn't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I don't look-
Thought it was kind of a handshake thing, they're gonna put that in there.
It's quite possible, yeah. It would be good to them to realize that.
You really should have that.
I don't, yeah.
Create an easement.
I've never spoke of side, future sidewalk easements. I think David Gilmore talked about that to North, or, or someone.
A sidewalk easement to the rail trail?
Well, not to the rail trail. No, that was a separate item.
But this will be presumably wrapped up in, um, other easements, you know?
Maybe, maybe not.
So, what do we need to do?
I mean, yes.
What's, some of it is-
One of the questions with the footbridge is, who's gonna use it? Is it for, for the people who use the parking lot?
Yeah, it's a public parking lot. You, that's right. Rich, you were here last time.
Right.
This is a, a combination of public parking lot as well as park, probably designated spaces for tenants.
Okay, so the public can cross the parking lot and go to the footbridge, great.
Well, the public being that the, the, uh, patrons of the businesses here, you know, they would have, they would have parking that would be available for customers. And you're not gonna open to the general public, other than customers.
So, the general public won't be able to get to the rail trail via this-
Oh, I see what you're saying, right. So, yeah, it's, it's impossible.
So, the kids coming from the park can't cross over and-
I don't think these guys have a problem with an easement if one doesn't exist. You know, just rates through-
No, I think you're gonna have more of a problem with the rail trail, granted easement, than you guys.
In just a clarification, the, the rail trail is village-owned property with the rail, the land trust is steward. There was a, a public project for siting of a park and ride, which may be when the, uh, bridge came to the property. The question is whether there's an easement for the bridge, so we can check that. I would think that there would be support for the existing bridge that's been in place to formalize the easement, if that was sort of an oversight at the prior stage of property development.
I still wanna bring this up weeks from now, while I'm there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I, but, really, I think what Rich is saying in part is, is the public going to be free to cross the street, walk through your parking lot, cross the bridge, and then walk their dog, get on their bicycle and go across?
So, how do we christen that?
We'd grant an easement, yeah.
Alright, let's do it. Write it up, Barry. Done.
You're right, the public would be able to use all the open spaces, a resale establishment, so you want people to walk freely and you circulate through it.
Yeah.
So, so additionally, there's a really, you know, poorly kept br- land crossing there on the side. What's that? Rich, can you turn around and you see that, your thanks, Mike?
This area here.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, we're, we intend to, um, beautify that and make it a more deliberate path, um, that engages the rail trail.
We're, we're, and maintain it.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's also some talk about that ditch in there, maybe filling that in.
Is there any drainage just coming down through the back of that?
Yes, most definitely.
Oh, absolutely, but we would build a drainage system.
We would accommodate that, of course.
Yeah.
So-
You know, we would-
So, you're gonna have two interconnections into the rail trail.
Correct.
Yeah.
And frankly, you know, people can, will be able to traverse the lawn, right? So, it's-
Well, that's not right. I mean, they should just walk across the lawn.
Oh, walk across.
Well, I, I think what we're planning on doing in the, we, you know, we'll see what the landscape architect comes up with, is to create like a park atmosphere between the trail and this, the, the part of this, though. You know, lawn area, for, you know, maybe some benches.
Yeah, but most of the lawn area would be actually on the rail trail property.
On the rail trail.
No, there's a significant amount of it, uh, behind our building.
The, the ten-foot?
And when you get to the south end, it's probably the distance between the building and the trail, half of it's on our land, half of it's on the trail. So, so there is, there is some.
But what, meaning what, though? What is, what are you thinking, Liz? Why does that matter?
I can show you right, right here.
Well, because you'd still need an area to.
In fact, there's some, um, there's this channels up here, we probably wouldn't fill this part of it, we'd probably just a pipe, you know, probably fill it with stones.
Extend the pipe.
So it would rate up from this section right here. So this would be like kind of a continuous lawn area, this is what we're thinking about, we don't have a plan yet. Two, and the trail's right here, um, but then from this area back, this would stay, would it?
And then dump into the stream that's to the north?
Well, there's two pipes that shoot over and, and work their way over to the Walkell. Uh, there's this one right here.
Oh, so that, that swale doesn't drain into the stream that's to the north?
Some, some, some does.
Some, some does, but there are pipes that lead some of it out to.
Well, no, I mean, what, what the existing drainage seems to go into that.
We're gonna, we're gonna maintain the existing drainage, you know, whereas we're not changing anything that way. All we're talking about doing is maybe pipe in a section of this channel there.
Right, so that you can have.
So you can be.
To, to neaten it up, right, yeah.
Yeah, just to clean it up.
So.
But that's not your land, that's.
That's, we would need permission.
So it's two issues, and, uh, so there's two, there's actually three people involved in this.
Right.
Village owns it, the land, the rail trail is the steward, and then you all, so, um, we'll have to figure out who in the village would have to also be involved. I don't know if that's the village board or what.
So, so I'm, I've asked the village clerk to get us on the, um, village board's net, the next available meeting.
Okay.
Um, and one of the issues is this.
Yeah, just to clarify, legally he's involved. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a problem that you're improving the rail trail.
And maintaining that section.
I think that's pretty, my personal opinion, would, would be, you know, something that would be favorable for everybody. Um, I just wanna ask you a question. You have this walkway that you're referring to. You mentioned providing item four surface.
That's what the trail is there.
Really?
In that section, yeah, I, I think, south of Mulberry, it's item four.
All right, um, I mean, we might want something a little finer than that on the top surface.
An item four? That's above concrete.
It does, okay.
Yes, it's a nice.
Actually, most of this is tailings, it's all, it's all grinded.
It's, it's, it's a well-graded bluestone that has dust in it.
Oh, okay, then I, then I.
And it rolls up smooth and it's.
All right, then I misunderstood what it was.
Mohawk bizarre uses it for their trails.
Yeah, you mentioned that, okay. That's fine, then I forget what I said.
That's good.
All right.
Okay, so that's that, we've already talked, we've already, we've already talked about landscape design, um, you know, I just wanna fill you in on generally how I'm approaching the public. I don't know if, how many of you read the Village New Poles Facebook page and so forth, but I'm trying to make myself available to, to anyone and everyone who has general concerns about this. And I've, I've already met with all the neighbors who are, who are listed at the back with the exception of McLaughlin. I can never get ahold of that person. I don't think they live there very often. But everybody else, from Tom and Corinne Nyquist to all of the neighbors, are very familiar and, um, by all, by all indications, are very, are very encouraged by this project. And so that, that's nice. But we'll see at the public hearing if my, uh, perceptions are accurate. Yes.
Also Saturday held a public outreach at the site.
So, yeah, a bunch of people came to the S T S property and, um, got a chance to see this and ask questions and so forth.
Um, I'll remind you, the ideas that you have behind the building.
Yeah.
Sound very intriguing. Um, behind the parking lot, you're gonna wanna maintain.
Yep.
Some foliage to provide, um, a substantial buffer for plants.
You'll see our landscape man.
May I, I have a comment about the parking lot. The existing parking lot encroaches on the ten-foot, uh, rear yard. And, and that should be fixed.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a re, a problem with the parking lot being within ten feet. I don't think that's a code issue. I couldn't find that where parking lots.
Parking lots are not allowed to be encroaching inside, in any yard, in the yards.
That's gonna be reviewed, right?
Question attorney also?
I, yeah, it's already down.
Yeah, so we're gonna have an answer on that, but we would tend to be required to take up an existing condition.
If the existing condition goes against code, you would.
But how, how would that have happened? Why would the state have built something that violates?
State can do whatever they want.
They do it.
The parking lot is already there.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, they've built, yeah. Mike showed me the pictures of the dirt lot.
He filled, he filled in a lot of filler.
Lot of filler there.
Yeah.
I told you, even that from, uh, that place on top of the hill.
This is the approach.
Oh, right.
What's that called? That big senior?
And, uh, they pretty much built what's out there. I mean, I mean, you know, what's out there.
Golden Pond, I keep on calling.
Hold on, hold on, very tall.
So, these are the plans that, um, that were, uh, I believe they approved.
State for the, oh, no, Barry.
It's Village New Poles.
Yeah, no, that's.
And, you know, the parking does, it's, it's pretty much where it was proposed on these plans, you know, like this match as well as.
I'm not saying that it disagrees with the plans, I'm just saying that as of right now, it's against code.
We don't, we don't, I didn't, you have to show me where it says that. I, I couldn't find that in the code.
Parking isn't allowed to encroach in the yards.
I thought it said front side and specifically excluded, saying rear.
That was the, the loading dock.
That was the loading dock, she's right. That was the loading dock.
So if we could just get clarification on the code, the reference in the code, so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And while we're on the subject of parking lot, the parking spaces, as you note on your existing conditions, is eight and a half by nineteen. Code requires, code being two twelve dash forty-three parentheses A, that the parking spaces' minimum dimensions are nine foot by eighteen foot. Exclusive of access drives and aisles, which then leads to aisles. The aisles are presently twenty-six feet wide, but you want to reduce them down to twenty-three and a half. By code, specifically two twelve dash forty-three to B two E, the aisles have to be twenty-six fo, feet wide regardless if, if it's one-way or two-way. For perpendicular parking.
I thought the overall nine by eighteen spaces.
Your existing conditions plat indicates that it's eight and a half by nineteen.
If I, let me, I just wanna point some out once again in this new code, to the, um, the N P R, right?
N P R.
It's, it's a section in item fourteen, off-site parking, says the planning board may, at its sole discretion, approve the joint use of a parking facility in lieu of reduction in the parking requirements, up to thirty percent for two or more principal building uses, either on the same, adjacent, or nearby courses, or as clearly demonstrated that the reduction spaces and shared use of parking facilities would substantially meet the intent of the parking requirements by reason of variation in time of use of patrons, employees, well, it just goes on and on. Uh, let me see, it, it goes to maintenance, um, it said somewhere, there shall be a covenant. So I guess, um.
What's the specific code, though?
I mean, I'm getting this out. That was a section in the new code where the planning board had the ability to waiver. Oh, yeah, where the planning board approves a lesser dimension as required to serve parking spaces arrangements at less than ninety degrees or landscaped areas. I think in this code, I, I can't find the exact spot right now, but I think the new zoning code allows the planning board to have flexibility in those parking dimensions.
Not in the size of the spots, in the number of spots.
No, I think it.
Well, no, it's.
It did say size somewhere. It's a long section here. I should have, uh, highlighted it, but I didn't.
We've talked about, you know, compact sized parking.
And unfortunately, no, it's in our code, do we account for compact spaces?
Well, we're actually.
My little scion does a much smaller spot than mine, I think.
But we might want to.
Whoa, 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 one at a time, please. Uh, no, I'm just, it's impossible. I can tell you, people at home will have no idea who, what's being said, that's all. So, just, pay, let's just be patient. So finish what you're gonna say.
No, I said there was just a discussion about different sized parking spots, because cars have gotten smaller over the years, but we've never done anything about it. Nine by.
And you were gonna point out.
Yes, that, that at present, our code does not allow for, uh, compact car parking spots. And perhaps it should.
Yeah, it should.
And you guys, I know you guys are in a rush, just like any developer would be, but because you're the first ones on the N B R zoning, you're kind of stuck with the growing pains that go along with it. And if your site plan indicates that we are in need of, uh, code that addresses compact spaces, then, okay, you know. Um, but as of right now, the code doesn't.
Okay, well, I, actually, I found that section in the code.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Let me read it now. It says, each parking space shall be nine feet wide by eighteen feet long, except handicapped accessible spaces that are to be in accordance with the New York State Building Code and with parking aisles. Backup and maneuvering aisles between rows of parking spaces shall be at least twenty-four feet wide, except where the planning board approves, approves a lesser dimension as adequate to serve parking spaces arranged at less than ninety-degree angles or landscaped areas. So we actually laid out the revised parking lot, lined by eighteen with twenty-four foot aisles.
Yeah, that's what I see here.
Yeah.
I.
The existing parking lot may not comply with that, but we're gonna re-stripe it and change the, the layout.
But you're narrowing the, the aisles.
Twenty-four.
To twenty-four feet.
Which is what our code just allows.
Wait, there's only, actually, there's one spot where we don't have twenty-four feet, but there are no cars backing into it. And that was so I could create a little bit of a landscape dial, and that is right here where I have a twenty-foot section just in here. But it's just an area where you have two-way traffic. Uh, if I made it twenty-four feet, I would lose that little green strip. And I was trying to create as much green in the parking lot, so we could get some trees in there as possible.
Well, perhaps it's a, 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 uh, a situation where the N B R code is contradicting exist, the, the, the code for parking, 'cause of specifically under street parking.
Yeah, it does.
And, and that's something that we have to fix one way or the other then.
Well, I think this code overrides.
Kind of falls in that growing pains category that I was talking about.
I think, I think this code overrides the general.
I don't think that was a mistake, actually. The, the, part of our objective in this area is to try to, as it says in the intent or the, at the opening of this, is to try to create an area that reduces the need for the automobile and encourage other alternative uses and, um, within safety bounds, one of the things that we're trying to do is, is tighten this space up a little bit. I mean, so we're allowed, we're allowing twenty-four feet, uh, twenty-four foot wide aisles here. I mean, that's what it says, so that's what they're, so they're not, they, they are in compliance at the moment.
'Cause there's many things that the, right, my understanding, there's many things in the N B R code that don't exist in it, in the other code.
Yeah, and it, it just.
Well.
Overriding that too, I know there's been a state case law that says that if there's discrepancies in a zoning code, that the, um, the, the benefit, the doubt goes to the applicant. That's a pretty strong ruling, you know, so there's.
I mean.
But, but I think, it, Mike says, this code was written to say, hey, we're making some special arrangements here for parking. I mean, you know, your number of parking spaces required, everything is different than the general code.
I mean, do you feel that if it's at twenty-four feet thick, we're creating a, uh, a hazard? That, I mean, that's the, that's the question, that to me, that's the major question.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, I think that that's why it was written as, as that Y, 'cause, um, everything, even with.
And I think it was, but I think part of the thing is that our zoning was written, these parking apartments were written when cars were bigger and the vast majority of cars.
Twenty-four feet wide aisles for, for, for perpendicular parking is the national standard. You know, nine by eighteen parking plus twenty-four foot wide, that's like, you know, that's nationwide, that's the general standard today. And then there's some exceptions where they allow smaller parking spaces and I've seen some towns.
But you're planning on, on re-striping to twenty-four foot wide aisles?
Yes, yes.
And nine foot wide parking spaces?
Yes, yes. Yes, they're all, they're all gonna be re-stripped and lined by eighteen.
Go ahead, what's your concern?
About, yeah, uh, having enough room for packing in. But you're saying that that's national standard is twenty foot, twenty-four foot, excuse me.
Yes, and most towns around here have that same standard. There's a few variations, some of the towns, couple of, there's, there's, I forget what town right here only requires twenty-two feet for an aisle. Some towns require twenty-six, but twenty-four is the general standard for the, with the aisle. Mine by eighteen is pretty standard for parking. There's a few towns that still hold on to ten by twenty, which goes back to the nineteen sixties, you know, um, but, um, and there's a couple towns that are starting to allow compact cars, which are eight and a half by eighteen.
Well, then, then perhaps our code, our parking.
We're, we're.
Hold on, wait, hold on, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Let's just finish this, finish this one.
Liz is, one more thing, Mike.
Then, then, then the end result of that is then perhaps that portion of the code should be changed.
Okay, well, let's make a note to put this.
There's the, that possibility, but then, of course, there's always those wonderful unintended consequences. Um, I, I just would rather err on, on the side of safety and I think having wider aisles is, you know, what about snow removal? You know, are you, where are you gonna put?
Snow, there's a few areas that can push snow off, but, um, in most cases, they'll have to load it and take it off-site. Which is, you know, not that uncommon, and you start getting a lot of snow. I, I might point out that, um, we don't have a lot of room to just add two feet to these aisles here. Something's gonna have to get.
No, the aisles are all, the, the existing aisles and where the light lamp posts are, 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 uh, at the aisles, uh.
Well, they also don't have any green space at all in the middle of the parking lot now.
Right.
So we tried to create some green space and we tried to maximize the number of parking. We were able to pick up ten spaces, um, uh, and, you know, and then we also moved the handicaps so they're accessible to the new building, um, and, uh, and we tried to create some green space in here. And, uh, I'm very, very confident this is a very safe parking lot to maneuver in with twenty-four foot aisles, nine by eighteen parking spots, you know. You start reducing the parking space down to eight and a half feet, I find that that's sometimes problematic, you know, you start putting a lot of those together. Um, you know, it's quite a narrow spot. People, they're, they're starting to ban it to each other.
I, um, I have a note to ask our building inspector, what his opinion is about twenty-four versus twenty-six.
Or does the county have any?
And also ask, we can also ask county and D O T, so, so let's, can we, can we file that one as?
We might as well, should, could we establish which national standard that is? Is that an ASHTO standard or?
Mm-hmm. Find that out. Do you know, Barry?
I, I'll get that down now.
Okay. All right, I mean, I think it's important that it be safe and if there is, if it turns out that we should look into.
And we're also gonna ask about the parking being in the rear yard?
Yeah, that's one of the things I already have, yep. Uh, you were gonna ask a question about bicycles.
I just didn't see the bicycle parking on here.
We didn't show it yet, but we plan on putting a lot of parking for bicycles.
Okay, you have to show, you have to show it.
There's actually a couple by the bus stop, we will increase that. The landscaping designer is, that's one of his missions, is to, let's lay out all the parking for bicycles.
Are you gonna have a, a shed for residents for bicycles, or are they expected to bring them up to their apartments?
Yeah, we, what was our latest thinking on that?
We're not absolutely, we don't have a certain answer, but we are considering, uh, internal storage. We have some spaces where there could either be like hall closets or, you know, either on the floors or potentially on the first floor. We still have to divvy out some of the space there. We have some space available, some mechanical, uh, you know, requirements we're still determining, uh, as we go.
Is there, are you, are you digging down? Are you gonna have a basement?
No basement.
No basement.
No, the slab is, in fact, it's gonna be the same slab. There may be some like water storage tanks, like hot water or if we do rainwater, you know, that, that's one of the potential spots on the building.
Okay, but, but not a basement.
Uh, but, but flood plain is right there, or, or, you know.
That's a really, we're really.
No building systems, um, you know, nothing but concrete or, or cistern type.
Yeah, we're, we're really pinned in here tight.
Okay.
We're pushing all the edges of this and unfortunately, we so wanted to have a basement, I pushed very hard for that for so many reasons, but it wasn't possible.
Okay.
Right, Barry?
I'm the one who will get out.
Right. Okay. Um, okay, so, we're, we're, we're really done. I mean, the only other thing I wanted to, um, bring up was, I, I was looking for some guidance from you guys about uses on the second floor. Uh, remember, we had talked about a couple possibilities there around the kind of office, other non-residential uses on the second floor, so I'd really like, um, to know what that might be. We don't have a strong opinion yet of how we might, may or may not use that, but we need to know if we can investigate that.
Um, so, there, you might get different opinions from different people here about this?
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just, let me just start by saying, I was, I've reread the code several times here and looked at earlier versions when it was in draft form. And basically, it's pretty general. It says that a second floor is either residential or a mix of residential and non-residential. And non-residential is everything that's in Schedule A, that's got an S next to it. Everything is a special use permit. That then, um, and again, as Liz points out, you're the first ones in, so we don't have any precedent. So we don't have any precedent for deciding exactly what we'd like to have on the second floor, other than people's general gut feelings about it. So we can go around the room and speak about what you think.
I mean, I think in the, the first time this was raised, the, the question about, well, what types of examples really prompt what Michael's describing, which is the types of examples might be what make those determinations over time. But it didn't seem specific enough to tell you now, you could have a hairdresser versus a psychologist. And I didn't interpret it any different than that. I don't know if that's problematic for your, you know, commercial plan, but, um, I think that's what I got.
Anyway, let's, why don't we get, go around here and see.
Does it significantly change your, uh, fire code requirements to mix uses on the floor?
I guess it depends on the use there too.
Right.
I mean, I suspect things like more intensive commercial uses like restaurants and retail would probably be discouraged by this board.
I think it'd be discouraged by me as well.
Right, but professional office, general office use, maybe certain kinds of services would be, um, more of the type, types of categories, but.
I'm gonna wait and see what you bring to us rather than.
Yeah, I mean, really.
Actually, it's more important for me as builders, we'd like to try and pre-prints some of these spaces, just trying to, we'd like, so I would actually on the first floor, like to know, what is this code intended to use for these first floors? Because I know David's been approached by people and, um, Martha, the party Keith has been approached. And so it's something like a bank, you know, last week we talked about this tavern, restaurants, bars, pubs, uh, coffee shops, home stores. I don't know.
Okay, hold on.
Close it first.
Let's finish, what do you, what's your thoughts about second floor?
Second floor.
Second floor and non-residential. I'll get back to what you're saying, just a while. But that is the question you were asked.
I think that, that it, it would have to be a limited use. And keeping in mind that some of the professional uses on a second floor might require, you know, back to parking. How much parking would they require for whatever that use is? Um, and as Rich pointed out, the fire codes for various businesses vary. Um, and would be so different from a residential fire code that.
Right.
You would then have to, you couldn't do a, you couldn't mix and match in between, okay?
Or you had to commit to.
You, you would then, exactly, you would then have to commit to that particular unit being only professional. Or only residential.
My sense for the size and scale of the building that you're talking about compared to some of the smaller lots and compare it to, say, examples that we have on Main Street, um, is that you're gonna, that the complexities of mixing, as people are saying, of mixing retail and residential and non-residential on the second floor might not be your best use of space there. If people have accessory uses out of, you know, if they have home businesses, that's completely different. Cause that's, then generally, you don't have a lot of traffic and those aren't dealt with under the same code. In terms of the building code, not the local code, um.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm not talking about having, like, you go down a hallway and there's residential use here and a commercial use. This would be accessed, accessed, you know, from a different place, it would not be mixed with residential.
So then I think you'd have to provide us with a, with a more specific building design of that in mind. As far as the first floor residential goes, um.
Retail.
The uses that are listed in the code under Schedule A are the allowed uses, um, throughout the district. It's pretty clear to me, you're not gonna be, some of those you're not even gonna consider. Um, auto repair, gas station, um, those are, I'm sure, not on your list and wouldn't make sense in this building. So, but you should explore those. Uh, let me just say, to be absolutely clear, bars and taverns are prohibited in this district. Restaurants are welcome in this district. Uh, takeout places are welcome, fast food restaurants are prohibited. If restaurants choose to try to serve liquor, they have to go through the New York State Liquor Authority. And as I said before, that's not.
Is that making a tavern up? I don't know this meeting.
No, it's not making a tavern. There are plenty of restaurants that have liquor licenses and they serve either beer and wine or they serve a full, and they operate under a different premise, they operate under different rules, as far as I understand it, with the New York State Liquor Authority than a bar. Um, we would not expect restaurants to be staying open until two or four o'clock in the morning. And they absolutely can't ever stop serving food or even pretend to, you know, do something like only serve peanuts or something like that. It's not, that's not a restaurant, so.
So, and like banks?
Wait, the, the list is.
Thanks, yeah, I mean, you should go through it, you should decide what seems appropriate for what you wanna do. Um, you know, and we understand it's, these are commercial uses. You may not know who all of your tenants are gonna be at the time. And, um, frankly, because, again, because you're the first ones through here and every use is a special use permit, we'll actually need to discuss how we handle, um, new tenants and then subsequent tenants in, in buildings in the NBR district. Cause I don't have a ready answer for that, but, um, hopefully, we can make it a process that's not onerous for tenants.
So every lease out will be a special use visit?
Right, but what that means exactly, I'm not really sure.
Unless it could be a succeeding business, perhaps be the same as the existing business.
Yeah, I mean, we still have a business change of use and, um.
And it might not, but we'd still be coming back to your notified building department at least.
Yeah, well, you're always going back to the building department for at least a business change of use and then, um, when a new business goes in. So if one restaurant goes in where another one left, it's still, the building department needs to be notified about that sort of thing. But for, your purpose is now.
That's right.
Um, I think you should focus on what's allowed and then what you think's appropriate.
Okay, cool.
It does make, it does make it difficult to pre-lease whenever there's a special use permit.
Ouch, yes. For a building project, you're trying to make an appropriate building design, it's better for me to know on the form. That way I can.
Well, I mean, correct me if I'm overstepping, but I mean, if you have specific tenants who are interested and you want, and during the application process, you would, I assume, be encouraged to let us know.
Make it run along as we get them?
Then, we can do pre-meetings on other things, right?
Yeah, I would say so. If that's fair, okay. Yeah.
Okay, great, wonderful.
I don't think we're at the serial board or playing board.
No, no, yeah, I know, so, but it's due that we have to come to for these. So during this process, a meeting comes up, we don't give you terrible notice, or it's a double use.
I would say, I would say not, no, I mean, we can.
Okay, cool, I love that, thanks.
Yeah, certainly we'll try to, to work with you in that regard if you keep us, you know, the, the best thing is to, to stay, keep the communication open, so.
Okay, so, um, what, again, uh, with our goal being getting a complete application to you by, or for the first of March meeting, so to you by the sixteenth of February, that, that application will include a complete landscape design. Um, if, if we're unable to produce that in time, then, then we'll have to delay it, but that's our goal. Um, we'll include, uh, updated elevations with, essentially what you've seen here, unless, unless there's something that we need to, you believe we need to address. We'll hopefully respond to whatever conclusions reached with regards to the, you know, some of those setback questions and interpretation of the code.
Yep.
What are the other big elements that are missing, kind of?
Well, we need.
You have the traffic study, um, you'll have the results of that. And.
Well, there's the site plans, you know, grading, drainage.
Right.
And, and I'm sorry, I know you had mentioned it earlier about the, um, on-street parking in the front, uh, off of thirty-two. DOT did give you an answer on that or you're still waiting?
No, I haven't submitted a plan to them, I've only had the phone conversations.
Ah, okay.
So I was waiting until we pin down where the building's gonna go and then submit to them a specific plan, which I mean.
So they can't, they can't give you an answer until they see the plan?
Obviously.
Okay.
One recommendation I have in that regard is you've got parking space immediately abutting the crosswalk across Route thirty-two east-west. We might want that to have some sort of, uh, sight line available, uh, in terms of the crosswalk, so that the person, in a sense, uh, isn't seen as they walk out. So it's, it's tight in that spot.
Okay.
How would, how would you address that, Barry?
Oh, let me look at that a little bit. You have a phase one study that was.
Yep, we have more than a phase one.
Okay.
We'll provide that with our clear application.
All right, so that'll be part of it.
Is that typical to submit the, all the environmental findings to, to the, as part of site application? I mean, as part of the, uh, clear application, is that normal?
Normal? Not necessarily, helpful, absolutely.
Okay, well, we're, we're ecstatic with the results we've gotten, so.
Okay.
They said, quote, "We cannot believe that this was an auto repair facility," is the, quote, "The cleanest, um, pro, pro, cleanest property she's ever seen in her twenty-five years of doing this with that use."
Okay, well, that's good for you guys.
We have cordial example, all sorts of stuff, so.
Okay, yeah, but no, I mean, we'll, that'll, that'll certainly, if, if we can, you know, if our engineers review it and agree and then can just give a, you know, sign off on that, then that's done, so.
Cool, all right.
So, okay, so, let's see. So you'll hope to have all of those things submitted. The landscape plan will be important, uh, lighting, you'll need that to be as part of your site plan cause the county is, the county is very interested in that stuff. So, um.
We talked to you last week, you brought up visual.
Yep.
Can you give us some feedback in scope as to what you'd like to see?
I think, um, from, and you may have heard this from talking to neighbors and stuff, the, the two issues that I hear, uh, the public talk about the most with respect to this, um, that they raise as possible concerns are traffic impacts, um, on the street and then also in coming off of the neighboring, the, the streets that feed the neighborhoods, especially Mulberry and the neighborhoods to the west. Um, but probably fairly also maybe a little bit, um, of the residential to the east on that part of Mulberry. Um, and the other big thing that people have raised concerns about is, uh, what will this building look like in terms of mass? And then also visually, how's it gonna impact the build, the houses behind it, especially to the west? So, um, what will people see if there's a forty-six plus story building where there wasn't before? And what kind of shadows is it gonna throw? You know, like, how far is that an issue or are the trees that are there gonna be essentially diffuse whatever?
Yeah, okay.
So, um, so a visual impact analysis, if that's the right term, um, and how you choose to do that.
View shed?
Do you mean visual impact as in view shed?
View shed would be from the other side of the street, though.
Yeah, I think.
Standing salon.
And, and yeah, that is, that's mostly commercial.
More like when you're looking at the, if you're standing in somebody's yard or if you're on Huguenot Street, what will you see above the tree line, you know, as you look across? And, um.
You won't see, yeah.
Well, no, but I think that, that's.
Yeah, what it.
Huguenot Street would be one, like, exemplar location.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so could you, can you do photo simulations or rendering or, I mean, I know people float balloons. I actually think that that's kind of.
I did that, I went out there, I don't know if you saw me chasing balloons all over.
I did not see, no.
I gave up, it was ridiculous, there's just no way for me to keep them from just blowing away and driving.
No, I think there's, there's probably like industry standard balloons that you use, I don't know. But, but, but honestly.
You mean the ones I got at the dollar store?
I, I have my reservations about balloons as a visual, as a particularly useful because when you look at the mass of a building versus a balloon, that, it doesn't translate.
Well, but also, meth- methodologically speaking, the balloon is used to get your height on a non-windy day.
Right.
And then, uh, architectural software is used to then fill in the massing and do the, the photo simulation.
Now, right. So that, right.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
They can't do one without the other.
Yeah, I need a very different kind of balloon, even on so-called not windy day, even the slightest breeze, I was having a terrible time. But anyway, yeah, I, I find it do that, I, I've taken pictures from the backyards of like the Nyquist and stuff and, I mean, and Anne from, I am taking pictures from Huguenot, but there's, the trees are way taller than the, we'll show you that.
So, so that is not, you don't, I don't, I mean.
I mean, those neighbors.
Disagree, but you do, I don't believe you need that as part of your initial application in order to, us to determine that it's complete. But I suspect that that's the kind of thing prior to the public hearing, that people would like to be able to see so that they have a sense. Otherwise, I, I can, you can be certain that those questions will come up at the public hearing and then you'll just be delaying yourself trying to respond to that, so.
Okay, so to be clear, visuals from the Huguenot side at many different angles, but the other side of the street, the renderings we have are probably the best example of the visual impact, right? From the, from here, yeah, maybe at a similar distance, is that what you mean, go, go like back or row?
You've mostly, the one I've seen is from the south. You might wanna do it like what it's gonna look like coming from the north, um, and due east, if you go up Mulberry Street a little bit, like. You know, so, has it, and those, you know.
And some of them might be more of an outline amassing as opposed to the full rendering. Say, the border shot, right, cause, you know, potentially I could, I could get at my reference points ghosting something, got it's correct, but.
Sure. Yeah, I think if you can, if you can pick some points so that, you know, as you're coming down the rail trail, for instance, say, going towards the north from the south or maybe the other way, like, at what point do you begin to see the building? And how does it, you know, sort of, how does it address the, the rail trail in the street and so forth? That, you know, I'm, the kind of architectural things that you probably have already thought about. Um, but depict it so that the public can, can see it for themselves, cause we don't all necessarily have the same acuity that you have, so.
It's gonna look great, can't you see it?
Okay? Um, so, yes, if you could have everything in by the sixteenth, um, then we can certainly have you on, um, for the formal application review. First meeting would be then March third. Uh, at that point, we would have comments from Dave, hopefully we'll have some comments from our engineer and from the building inspector. We can make a determination of completeness at that point, which means we could then go ahead and send the packet up to the Ulster County Planning Board. Uh, we could set a public hearing, um, at that time. That's about as far as we could go at that point and we'll, um, you know, we'll, you will have submitted the seeker, which you've pretty much already done, I believe, but, um.
The SEQR.
Yeah, the SEQR, so you'll need to submit that and then we'll have a look at that. Well, Dave has made a preliminary determination of what he believes, this is as an unlisted action, um, so. Cool, all right.
So let me just, uh, ask the board in general, are there any other issues that maybe we haven't discussed yet that may raise concern about this particular site or, or, you know, proposal?
How many square feet are you, are your solar arrays total?
What are they about, what, just say it.
I mean, the footprint of the building is, what, seventeen thousand three thirty? It doesn't completely cover the roof, but it, cause it has a nice perimeter for fire access and, you know, all good things. And then it comes down the south face in those four banks on the four sets of roofs that we have. I don't.
Seventeen thousand?
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, it's probably over, it's probably over twelve thousand square foot, so thirteen, I, I don't have a firm, so. What's your, what's your thinking?
You've given us the output we provided, not the.
Uh, it's five hundred and seventy-four panels and some of the questions then, do you count the spacing between the, of the racking, the racking system? Or just the panels themselves?
And each, each is eight, eight square feet, right, two by four?
How?
Forty-two by sixty-two, and that's with a little bit of leeway, if they're about forty by three and a half by five.
Do the math.
Something over, of like seventeen thousand square foot.
Sun power, he likes the most, the greatest energy density because we have limited square footage. So as much square footage as we can create and then as much energy density in the panel selection.
You can be certain it's far and away the largest solar array in the, in the, in the area.
No, no, I was just collecting three acres.
There you go.
Any thoughts from you?
Nothing original, no.
Okay. Rich, no? John?
Very thorough.
I, I still have a height issue about the elevator, but I've already said that.
Okay, well, all your comments have been great and very helpful to these guys. And we'll make sure that we address all of these. So, I will put these questions out to our building inspector and attorney and I'll keep in touch with you or Christina will about getting you answers back. And we'll shoot to have everything back to you, say, I said Monday, it might be a week from today. So it might be Tuesday.
That'd be great.
But enough time so that you'll have a full week.
Right.
Alright.
So do you want to clear in your record that, is this, in a sense, the closure of the pre-application stage at this meeting tonight?
Yes, sir. I think that's fair, right? You feel like you have enough now? We'll get these other answers.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. I mean, this is the, essentially, the meeting. The third pre-application of sorts. The other, the first one was really informal. Anyway, thank you for taking that.
You're welcome. Alright, so we'll stay in touch and we'll wait for the, you'll hear from us and I'll hear from you.
Great.
Alright, thank you all very much. Okay. Alright, well, we should be able to move pretty quickly through stuff. Dave, the MS four stormwater, Dave Gilmore?
So you've got to revise stormwater law. I think I tweaked two definitions and provided you a lot of the administration enforcement sections of that law that we've been waiting for, for some time. I think I opened it up to your questions. I did receive today, by the way, our next steps memo from the consultant for the US EPA plus resiliency project. I think that would be a good tool for you to review and consider as you further advance stormwater management planning. But, you know, the topic before is interesting. The stormwater law that's consistent with the New York State model law for managing construction and post-construction, so that's what's before you. And I'm happy to talk about approach or any of the new specific contents, content presented to you.
Any specific questions or comments from people? Or do you need another, another interim between meetings to digest all this?
Dave, so the corrections and the additions are all the ones marked in red?
Yeah.
Right, you've got tracked changes version in red where it's existing code is modified. However, I think that there are a few pieces. I provide the guidance on the cover sheet as to what pages changed. It's really, I think, nine through eleven essentially, besides page three. But there is, I think, some, correcting if that, but there is some proposed law such as on page ten that it doesn't show in red. The whole section would be new, that A one through five on pages ten and eleven. We've got a concurrent process going on with your standards for two twelve twenty-three review within site plan review. My hope would be not only to progress with this stormwater law, but make sure that the two standards as they evolve talk well with each other as well within the whole zoning law.
That'd be great.
I've talked with, you know, and I can just say, in terms of this is administration and enforcement. I've tried to consult with Brian. Brian got this about the same time with you, although I did consult with him as I was developing it. But I think that having, having Brian's perspective on some of the administration enforcement would be helpful.
Alright, so you're waiting on that? Okay. So, planning board members, do you have specific comments now? Or do you want two weeks to read this and let's make sure that we can give Dave feedback?
Yeah.
Is that, that'll have to be our timeline. Okay.
I think that I'll be sharing this proposal with the Environmental Policy Commission. They've interest, they've indicated interest in this topic. And I believe they'll also be working with the town conservation advisory board or commission on this topic. There's interest in the topic of stormwater. As I said, I'll forward you the next steps memo. I think it would be encouraging, I'd encourage you to just at least glance at that. It seems like a good contemporary planning study for a topic like this. I don't think the topics like, you know, we got a grant for making the culvert underneath the rail trail by the intersection of Water Street and Mohawk Avenue for making that culvert under the rail trail resilient, and underwater Street resilient. But that doesn't apply to too much of this topic except for if we're managing stormwater onsite and doing a good job of how stormwater, the volume and quality of stormwater emissions that go into the public system, then you're, in a sense, managing the flows that hit, go through culverts like that. So hopefully, you're keeping the flows manageable so that infrastructure like that doesn't sort of have stress.
So, any new news about, did you guys meet on two twelve twenty-three?
We did.
And how did it go?
Considerable.
Excellent.
Knocked off another couple pages, so we're five pages in.
And you have another meeting set?
There's another meeting this week. It's Friday.
Okay.
And I think quite possibly between this meeting tonight and our next meeting that I would recommend issuing a draft.
Great.
Changes to the board's review.
For, to the, to the planning and zoning board?
That's right.
Okay.
Took part in the last, and she can. He also put I.
Okay, any? How'd it go for you?
Two twelve.
Two twelve twenty-three meeting?
I think we got a lot hashed out. There was, uh, there were some changes that I got an email about. I guess everyone got an email about, and there was a couple of additions that we had added to the site plan. I might be repeating what Bill just said, but.
No, that's fine.
And I think we're making headway on it.
Okay, good.
We're not done, but we're making headway.
Great. Alright, so you can let us know either how things are going at the next meeting or you'll actually have something. So you meet?
This Friday.
This Friday.
We're meeting weekly for two hours.
So ideally, we would like to have materials by Tuesday, right? If they have something that you want to put in the packet, we'd like to have it for Tuesday for distribution.
This coming Tuesday.
Yeah, a week from today. And if that's not feasible, since we're sort of expecting it, I guess what we should do is check in with you. So you're meeting on Fridays. All I'm trying to think is that, and you don't work on Friday. So if we were gonna, if you were gonna send us something for the February sixteenth meeting, you would basically have to have it at the latest. You would have, you guys would then be responsible to getting it to everybody by a week from this Friday.
That's right. Which I think is, given the progress we've made on these changes where it now should be realistic.
I mean, the preference is if you can get enough done at this Friday meeting so that we could have it in our regular packet. If you need a second meeting, it means that you're basically sending us a raw document. We won't have any additional input from you, probably, and so forth. Less than ideal, but.
Well.
I mean, you're.
Dave's also at those meetings.
Oh, he is, okay. So he's, so he has input directly there. Alright. So that's, you're gonna have to use your judgment or let me know whether it's feasible for people to look at it. I mean, I know you guys look at your packets as soon as you get them on Wednesdays. But if you have the weekend for that, maybe that would be enough. But we've got a fair bit of homework already, so it might be that we'll just have to put that off until the first meeting in March.
Right, so ideally revised along with previous?
No, whatever the version is that you, whatever version you want us to review to go forward so that the zoning board and the planning board can have consensus about this so that we can send something to the village board, that's what we want. We don't need all the.
Sure, okay.
I don't think we need every version. No, that's your, that's your job. Okay. So shoot for the beginning of, the middle of next week. Okay, so we have minutes to approve, minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Nice job shortening them. So the first version was ten pages. Christina brought them down to four. So it went from short story back to minutes. Please correct Victoria Polidoro's spelling of her name. It's, at least in one location, it's, you have it with an A. It's P-O-L-I-D-O-R-O?
All O's.
All O's.
Okay.
Or two O's anyway. No A's.
All the door.
Yeah, three O's.
All the door.
Any other comments or changes? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen? Second?
Can they approve with one change?
With the, as requested. Second?
The second.
Thank you.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have to stand on the steps.
You were. Okay, so we have a letter requesting support for a grant application for the HPC, the Star Preservation Commission in the Village. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. If not, take a quick look at it. And this is a CLG grant application which the word "application" is misspelled, but other than that, it's pretty good to me.
That's how they use capitals.
What was there?
The word "application" is misspelled in the title. That's all right.
It's still, we went through one, one minor revision, and I forgot to print that out.
What's the revision? Anything substantive?
I don't, I didn't have a chance to review. Mr. Olson took in part, and I forgot to review it today. I don't think it's substantially different. I think it's just grammatically word smith and.
Okay, no, I don't see anything.
Flow is improved.
Okay. Do you want to give us a thirty-second version of what the grant is about?
Historic Preservation Commission is one of your other land use boards. It was a really neat discussion at the Comp Plan Committee meeting today about ways to coordinate with other land use boards and committees, but that's a parenthetical aside. But the Historic Preservation Commission is a certified local government, and they meet standards for preservation commissions that review landmark properties or properties within landmark districts and essentially provide site plan review for those. Certified local governments are eligible for funding from New York State for preservation planning. It's a very, there's about sixty-five plus or minus preservation commissions in New York State, and it's a soft match. So it's an excellent resource for resources, for planning, for preservation. And of course, we have very remarkable historic resources within our community. So, long and short of it is, this is another in a series of previously successful CLG grant applications that are going after on the order of five thousand dollars, matched with my time and other volunteer time to produce a video that will explain the benefits of preservation process and ways to efficiently interact with preservation process to make sure that it's a very clear and amenable process. Just like you said, you're not an appscerial land use board, neither is the Historic Preservation.
Who's going to be, who will do the video? Or is that going to be awarded on a competitive basis?
I'm going to get out there with my iPod. No, they're looking at actually, they're looking at having a professional videographer. So they will work up scripts or a script, work that through the community, but also through the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation and Historic Preservation Unit. And then they'll actually bring that script to a videographer who will help them film, for example, examples of good and bad workmanship and things like that.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay, so, a motion to authorize me to sign this letter of support for the Village of New Paltz's Dark Preservation Commission's CLG grant application.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, thank you guys.
So I know that's a little bit sort of new. You might not have seen stuff like this before. But it seems like it's the ability to know what other land use boards are up to and promote that cross-fertilization and collaboration.
So Christina, do you, are you receiving copies of the updated version?
I will get her a copy.
Okay, so if you get her a copy.
That I provide you tomorrow.
Alright, then tomorrow I'll sign it. Okay, perfect. Christina, you're up. Web page updates?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for people to review what's currently on the Village website under planning board. There's just a little summary. I could have provided it tonight, but you can simply go on the website and look at it. And let me know if there is anything that you would like to change. We can't necessarily do anything with the graphics, but we can change the wording, the description of the planning board. And then there's some forms to open up. And currently, we're trying to, there's only four forms listed under planning board. And currently, we're trying to redo the application for clarity purposes. Maybe include an applicant checklist so they can go over what process they need to do. And just clarifying, I'm working with Brian on this. And we've already worked through one for the zoning board, use variance application, area variance application. So now we're just, you know, any input that you have on those forms? Maybe you'd like additional questions added to them? It's basically it. You can look at other towns too. I think Ellen Macho mentioned Geneseo and Brockport, other SUNY towns, and what they do with their websites. It's very nice, but I don't think we have input into that, just into our personal description and our forms.
Okay, so if people could spend a few minutes, maybe over the weekend or something, just take a look at the site. And if you have any specific comments, if you would just put them in an email and send them to Christina and myself, we'll compile them and we'll try to put together something for your packet that will just suggest any changes. If, if everything seems fine, we'll just, maybe we won't even be an agenda item, we'll just move it along. But if it seems worthwhile, we'll just have everybody at our next meeting just quickly have a look at it, you know, approve it or not, and we'll go from there. So, small item. Okay, thank you. So for the next meeting, February sixteenth.
Were you going to do a status report for Jungle Comp Plan?
Oh, shoot, sorry. I forgot all about that. Thank you. So the, there's a committee that has been meeting fairly regularly. I guess we've met three or four times, four times now. I guess we've met three or four times, four times now, that is co-chaired by Bill and by Fran Wischnik. And the mayor and the supervisor typically attend. We've got a number of people representing both town and village boards, planning boards. We've got some local business owners. And the objective is to try to move forward the joint comprehensive plan update. And as of today, our focus has been, have, we've had a lot of spirited discussions about exactly what the sort of sequence of things would be, recognizing we need to put together a request for proposals to hire consultant, but issues about how much money we're gonna spend and what we're gonna spend it on and sort of whether the RFP needs to come first or whether more public outreach needs to happen. All of those things have been various, at various times, the topics of discussion. Today, Dennis Doyle spent the meeting with us and gave us information about, from his perspective, about how we go about putting together an RFP. And it was, I didn't bring my notes with me, but it was extremely insightful. He's got a lot of experience with this. And the short of it is, he said, in order to put together an RFP, you need to be able to answer the questions, what is it that you want in your comprehensive plan? And that should inform what it is that your RFP will then be saying, which would then presumably help to, you to get the most appropriate consultants to respond to the That, that's an incredibly general sort of view of it. I know there are several people here who have been at the meetings. If you have anything else that you want to add, I am just trying to give you sort of a status, general status report on it, so.
I would just say as a conclusion that we hope Fran, Fran Wischnik, co-chair, is going to draft an RFP and submit it to the rest of the committee to look at.
Right.
So, we can get off the dime and move to it and object.
Right, good point.
There's a real concern about moving forward.
Yes, we need to, right, we need to do that and...
After years and years of examining this, the committees come together and I think uniform consensus to say, let's, let's get going.
Yep.
Has there been a dialogue about this, what I understand to be New York State competition coming out about innovation and collaboration between municipalities? And I mean, I literally heard it on like, public radio, but are you familiar with this, David? So, apparently Cuomo set aside a fund that would represent awards for winners of a, of a proposal competition that is centered around efficiency and innovation resulting from collaborations between municipalities and counties. I think somebody must, on that team must be aware of it, but I just learned about it. It sounds like it's actually real money for exactly what is being discussed.
Hmm, I don't, what's your take on it?
We don't need a reaction to it. It's maybe just...
When I reviewed the governor's State of the Union, there was a budget proposal for $20 million along the lines of government efficiency and including benefits of joint work. It was unclear to me if it was one $20 million prize or a series of prizes. It would seem like we have a better shot at that and there's multiple incentives rather than just one. But it does seem like there's a, you know, there's the Village of New Paltz, but then there's also the 32 square miles of the Town of New Paltz. Having something like a unified zoning ordinance that speaks well across the sort of subsections or transects of the community and deals with things like infrastructure and land use across the municipality seems to be a win-win for the community. Is that really innovative? I think we need to define what the innovative parts are of how we can really do land use and zoning and economic development well.
Yep, so, keep it in mind. Um, okay. So, for our next meeting, we have one application in for a minor subdivision on, off of Plains Road, the Discovery Institute.
Yes, and, uh...
They're back.
...
Yeah, they're back. Yeah, with a, but they've...
We also have a site plan amendment too.
You've got Discovery Institute sketch.
Yeah, what's the site plan?
You've got site plans, two site plans.
Oh, yeah, right, they just came in.
Two site plans for, um, Woodland Pond.
Oh, yes, lots of service. Oh, more sunrooms, okay.
And I can't remember if Inarzone was back or not.
No. No, he's not back.
March, maybe.
No, that won't be...
So, then, so you've got the Discovery Institute sketch plan, the two site plans for Woodland Pond back, let's see, back at Stormwater, back at 21223, right?
Yep.
Anything else?
No. I mean, unless we get materials, well, no. We would have got, had to gotten things from Pencil Hill, but today we haven't, so. No word from them at the moment. Okay, um, I'd like to, oh, one quick thing. There's a meeting proposed for next Tuesday, the 9th, not proposed, there's a meeting here in Village Hall at 9:30 in the morning with the Lalo Group.
When?
Tuesday morning at 9:30. Is that, it would be great since you've been involved in this.
Oh, I'll plug it in now.
If you can do that. They've asked, they came to us, I think, and asked if they could meet with the mayor and...
Oh, yeah.
Can't? Okay. Would somebody else like to attend?
Can't.
Yep, I can't. Okay. Tuesday at 9, 9:30?
I'm doing my best.
9:30 here.
Yeah, so...
And do we want to be, take care of, not have a quorum of the planning board or...
No, I don't want to have a quorum because that's complicated. I don't actually know what the purpose of the meeting is. I have gotten no information, but I assume they have something that they want to float.
My understanding, the purpose of the meeting is that it's an interim meeting, that they've done their pre-application stage, they did a pre-application consultation with the village board and with the planning board.
Right.
They're interested in moving forward. It was encouraged for them to continue to consult with the villages as they formulate their analyses and possible recommendation. I can say that I recommended consulting with the community for, as they build and prepare a proposal.
All right, well, but...
Yep, sorry.
Now, is the planning board meeting?
I'm gonna be careful to make sure it's not.
Yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it out to you all here. I don't want this to be of anything other than, I don't, you know, I don't want this to appear to be anything other than it is. And I don't, as I say, let's see what the purpose is. I mean, if they have some, a couple of specific questions that they want answered, but if they're starting to float ideas and they want to get feedback, I'm just gonna tell them to come to the planning board, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if they have those kinds of questions, you've got to have consultants on staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they'll remember calls together for anything other than a meeting of the planning board.
Yeah, well, so we'll see. I'm willing to go forward if, if either you or Bill would like to decide if you want to attend, just one of you, or else I'll step aside and both of you can. I, I may...
I don't know that I can yet, but...
Okay. All right, but...
If you can't, I will.
Okay, well, let's just stay in touch then with that. All right, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive dis, session to discuss matters related to employment of an individual or corporation. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll make it brief. We're gonna come out, we won't be taking any action after that, we'll just adjourn. So, that'll be it. Thank you all very much for attending.
Great meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Great meeting. Have a good meeting.
The press, so...
Oh, we forgot a public comment.
I don't know what the press is...
Yes, we forgot. I forgot to note a public comment. I'm terribly sorry.